All right, well, I've got five o'clock now, so we can, we can start this workshop. And the plan is to talk about the Long Beach Volunteer Fire Department contract. I assume everybody has a copy of that.
Yes.
At least, at least everybody who's gonna be in on the meeting. That's all, we've all read it through. I guess, I thought Chris was gonna be here, but maybe not. Um, I think he's reviewed it also.
Chris is here.
Oh, you are there, okay, good. All right, so people had comments, so I'm gonna open up the floor to people who have comments about it.
I'd be happy to start this, Mike. I think the one thing that, and John and I talked about this briefly over the phone. The one thing that I would like to suggest is that on page, bear with me, page four, paragraph C, as it relates to future capital expenditures, I think we ought to deal with that as a separate issue aside from this contract and exclude it from this contract. I don't think it pertains to the, the normal day-to-day. It's certainly an important issue. It's also based on the exhibit that John supplied, fairly significant investment, because the equipment has reached the point where it's, it's exceeded its 25-year lifespan in many cases. And, but I think it's a, it's a, it's a large issue. I think there's some, I think there has to be some analysis done on it. Uh, we gotta figure out what the annual impact is from a depreciation perspective on the town, so we can properly quantify it and just determine whether or not it's, there's room in the budget to pay for all this equipment. So, um, that's the first thing that popped out at me. Number two, and we can take them, just take them in that order if you'd like, just start with that one. Any thoughts?
Well, my thoughts are, yeah, I, that concerns me a great deal too. I, I think the contract ought to just be about the, you know, service to the town for fire protection. If we're gonna get capital investments, that, that should definitely be a discussion for a later day, a detailed, comprehensive discussion. And so I, I don't see the purpose of having that in this contract for fire services.
And so what would be the end result if the town decided not to replace, for instance, the equipment that's gotten so old? John, I guess, what, what, what would you foresee happening if that didn't happen?
Well, as, yeah, I, my, my feelings on capital equipment for the whole town, including the street department and the police department and the water department, is that we don't have a good handle on capital equipment in, in general. We've got an insurance list that Bill got from the insurance people that were insuring some vehicles and some rolling stock, but we really don't have a capital equipment, forward-looking capital equipment plan for any departments. So, I appreciate what Mike's saying and John, and I think Mary Lou's in the same boat. The problem we have is, we've been presenting this capital exhibit for well over a decade now, and nothing's been addressed. So, one thing I wanna point out to, to all of you is, in that paragraph, it says that it's subject to, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, subject to funds. If you look at the third line down, fourth, fourth line down, if you include the header.
What page is it on, John?
Page four. Or it's on four, you're down in, your number four C is the site. Roman numeral four C. Mike's asking about, you know, the capital equipment. So, it says in that fourth line, "or withheld by town, subject to funds available to town in consideration of its budgetary obligations." So that caveat has always meant that, you know, we were sensitive, the fire department was sensitive to the town's budgetary requirements and the obligations, meaning that's your out if you can't afford it. The problem with pulling out of the contract, again, we, we've been asking for this to be addressed through no less than three or probably four or five administrations now in the 10 years since this original 2011 contract was written. So, I'm reluctant to just pull it out, because it hasn't gotten attention in the 10 years it's been in the contract, and I don't wanna see it go another 10 years without being discussed, or, you know.
Well, I, I, I think it's gonna have to be discussed, and I certainly agree with John Wall with his concerns. My point, or at least my position is, it should be discussed and ought to be put on, maybe another workshop just for that, so then, then we can make a decision. Is there, are we gonna take the jump and do this? Are we gonna put up a bond issue to pay for? How, how are we gonna do it? But that ought to be a separate issue to look at the whole picture and not throw it in as a, as a... And I see what John's saying, and this has been going on for 10, 15 years probably. And it ought to be decided, one way or the other, either we're gonna do it, or we're gonna, or not do it. But if, then if we don't do it, then there's repercussions if we don't do it. So, so I think, uh, it's gotta be addressed. I don't wanna kick it down the can down the road anymore either, but I don't think it should be in this contract.
I, I think that those are valid points of the how. The difficulty that I see for the fire department is, and for the town, both sides, it doesn't matter to me. So, let's say we have this agreement, and then the town decides not to fund it, whether there's budgetary constraints or not. If you're going to do that, then you probably need to have an out clause, a termination clause, right, for the, the department? Because if, I'm looking from their perspective, if, if they don't have the equipment they need, the facilities they need, then they're not gonna be able to uphold their duties, but they have a contract that requires them to, right? So, so may, I don't know what that answer is. So, either, like you suggested, Mr. Coker, do you have a separate meeting? I don't know if it makes sense to bring them out, they're valid points, and I understand the why, or do you tweak that language? They are connected issues. I think only from the standpoint that you have, you can have a contract for services, but if they don't have a fire truck and they're pulling around the wagon, then what are we doing? Right? And so, that part, I, I just think that there at least has to be some interconnection between the two somewhere.
That, that's what this, excuse me, Chris, that's what this clause establishes, that...
No, I, I understand what it does now. I'm addressing to the point that Mr. Johnstone and Coker...
Keep in mind, I'm not asking you to purchase this equipment when you sign this contract. We're just telling you, if you look at the last sentence in that paragraph, it says, pursuant to the attached exhibit, it's a non-binding proposal. So, all we're trying to tell you is, we need to make this information part of our negotiation such that you're aware of it, number one, which I think all the departments in the town should be presenting capital budgets to the town anyway. You're aware of it, number one. We're giving you an out, we're telling you if you can't afford it, we understand. But we want the language in there such that you, you need to be replacing equipment in a timely fashion. There's, the cops are not running around in 10-year-old squad cars, the street department's not running around in 1920s plows, but the fire department is running around in soon-to-be-dangerous equipment. So, you know, we've had some failures, and again, I, you know, knock on wood, we haven't had them right in the middle of a big conflagration, but, you know, a truck ago, the last time we bought a truck, the truck that we replaced had dropped the drive shaft out on its way up the hill one evening. So, they get to a certain age and they're just untenable. So, we feel we've given you in this language an out for the purchase. And again, I'm not asking the, the town council to commit to the purchase of the equipment or the, you know, the contract for the station. We're just, if you read this language as it's written, and, and if Chris needs to tweak it a little bit, or we can discuss it, but we're not asking you to make these commitments tonight. We're just want, we just want the language in there such that you're aware of the commitments that are required to allow us to function. I think along those lines, and John, and I, and I would actually ask Chris in this as well, is this paragraph non-binding? Because when I read certain things in here which say, shall not be unreasonably denied or withheld by the town, and I realize it says, subject to funds available, and later on it says, furthermore, town shall be responsible for replacing emergency vehicles with department on a timely basis. To me, those are mixed messages when I, when I read the whole paragraph, and I don't, I don't feel comfortable that it is truly non-binding. What is your opinion on that, counselor?
And I think that gets to the point that you bring. I, I think your concerns are valid, and that language could be tweaked to mean, and to make the town's out clear, because obviously you have fiscal constraints above and beyond everything else. And I think that's the intention. I think that it could be better wording, so that it is clear that the town has an out, and I guess, then do we take it one step further and then give both parties the ability to terminate the contract? So, let's say that, because right now I think it's arguable, right? It says shall not be, you know, it's, it's legalese in my opinion, you know, that be unreasonably withheld, but that's arguable, right? Of what is or isn't in the budget, and could you afford to do it? So I think that that could be shored up and clearer, but then maybe there needs to be a mutual out, that if the town doesn't fund it, right? Or that the fire department could get out, or the town could opt out of it and make sure on that basis.
I mean, I think, I think the cleanest way, John and Chris, is to say, if this, you're simply making, you're, you're putting in the document to make us aware of the fact that we've got obsolete equipment, and here's the costs associated with it. Why don't we just say that in that paragraph, rather than get into the legalese about whether the town needs to, has to pay for it, has the option to pay for it, the budgetary obligations and all those sorts of things? Let's just make it an information paragraph that says, here's reality. The reality, Mike, is that we can't allow the town to not replace the equipment in the, in the, during the duration of the contract. You've gotta, you've gotta make a commitment to the fire department that you intend to replace this equipment in some sort of fashion. We're not gonna sign a contract that says, you're gonna hold us to living with our, in, in, you know, in 10 more years, it's gonna be 30- or 40-year-old equipment. We're not gonna live with that. It's untenable.
Yeah, and I think just to that point, I, I do think that it isn't apples-to-apples comparison for police department, fire department, right? Because the, the police department is under the town offices. And so that's the difference to me, is yet there has to be something, I guess, on both sides, that there's an expectation. Otherwise, um, so I don't know. I, I agree with you, Mike, that it, it should be clearer, but I, I do think that there probably has to be some, some plan, and maybe that's what we said, that there, there is a plan and the town commits, but, you know, there, there has to be an out for the town with the budgetary constraints. I, I think that that's reasonable, if you're going to continue to use the volunteer fire department services, that there is a regular plan in place to do those, and, and the natural expected, it's how it works with these volunteer fire departments, right? The municipality, or whoever's under, you know, if you look at center township, it's different, but the, the municipality pays for those.
Let me, let me give you a little history, Mike, to maybe get you a little more comfortable. First of all, the fire department does not own the station or the equipment. It's, the town owns everything, including, you know, the SCBAs and the radios and everything else that the fire department uses. So we don't have any equipment per se. We have a pickup truck that has a plow on it, we have a computer, and that's the extent of the fire department's equipment that's owned by the fire department. So the only way we function is if the town's equipment is available to the fire department. So, in terms of the, the long-term outlook for the capital expenditures, these are scary numbers when you look at them. We wanted to project them out for you, but if you look at it on a, a, you know, some sort of a payment schedules kind of a thing, we ran those numbers about a week ago at our, our officer meeting. If we were to get a million-dollar station and a $600,000 fire truck, and we amortize the fire truck at about 10 years, which should work for a vehicle of that scope, and the, the station addition for a 20-year period, which should work for that, that sort of an asset, you're looking at about a probably $120,000, $130,000 annual commitment on that sort of an amortization. And Mike, I'll defer to you, we can sit down and run those kinds of tables all day long, but, but that's what we're talking about. We're not asking the town to come up with $600,000 two years from now in cash, but I think we do need some sort of a commitment that we're gonna, we're gonna replace this equipment. So if we need to change the verbiage a little bit somehow, I think I'm okay with that, but I, but I really, I can't, we can't have a just a service contract without some sort of commitment from the town on the equipment. It's already, it's already somewhat...
I, I got a quick question. You know, the town owns all this, fire department uses it. The fire department has funds that's not a part of the town. I mean, I understand they have a secondary account or whatever it is that we're not allowed to look at. So, is the fire department prepared to possibly contribute something to this project and not have it 100% for the town? Because, um...
First of all, first of all, John, you're misinformed that you can't see the account. It's, it's, we're a 501(c)(3), all of our expenditure, all of our charitable contributions and the expenditures thereof from that account are listed in the public documents on the 501(c)(3) on the state report that's available to anybody that wants. So there, that's a misstatement that you're, you're not...
Well, then I'll withdraw that statement, but just ask the question then, you know, is the department willing to make some contribution for this major capital investment? That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, we, we've been saving money in anticipation of this, just as we did 15 years ago when we bought there, whatever it's been that we bought the last truck. We put almost all of our savings into the last truck. You have to realize, when you buy a truck, it's, it's not like buying a GMC Jeep. When you buy a fire truck, there's a certain amount of equipment that's on that truck based on the complement when you buy it, but there's all kinds of other things that need to be purchased, from, you know, revolving lights and all kinds of things, generators, hand equipment, ladders, some other things. Some come, some, some do not. So, we, we're, we are, that's, we're all about making those kinds of contributions, and we, we drained our account last time when we bought a truck, and that's, we, we contribute. I can get those numbers for you if you wanna see it.
Well, I know a lot of, a lot of communities that when they get new fire trucks and such, that will have regular fundraisers in the community, you know, have fish fries or whatever, ice cream socials or whatever, and, and, you know, money's raised that way in addition to whatever the town either provides or bonded or whatever. That's all I'm asking is, is...
Well, we do that, John, we do that every year. We have a fundraiser, and we also have, we have two fun, two major fundraisers. We, we really don't consider the ice cream social a fundraiser, but we do net some proceeds. That is basically just people out of the goodness of their hearts drop a little money into boots, and that goes into our fundraising account, again, which is saved up for when we need to buy things. We also buy things that are not in this contract every year as well. You know, part of what we expended our money on, again, that 501(c)(3) reports is available. But we do that, and we also have an annual mailing campaign that we get funds in from. And those funds, again, are part of that 501(c)(3) expenditure that's accountable to the public, through the state forms that we fill out every year. So we do those things that you're, you're talking about.
So, John, you'd be willing to share with us that 501(c)(3)? Because it's not itemized.
It's on the, it's on the state, it's on the state. You can go look up all of our 501(c)(3) since we've been a 501(c)(3). I'll defer to, I think Megan's on, if you wanna hear Megan's version of that. Hold on. Meg, are you on?
Yeah, I'm here. Uh, so, like John said, we are required to prepare 990, which is subject to public record. And on that 990, Mary Lou, there's what's called line 16, and that's an additional breakdown of other expenses. Uh, basically, that discusses, you know, our expenditures for the year. So, as required for our, our exemption status, that is all on the 990. It's filed by November 15th of every year, and it's all on the IRS website. If you do a simple Google search, you'll be able to find, find them. It just depends on how quickly the IRS uploads them. So they're always usually a little bit delayed in uploading the most recent tax return, but that gives a breakdown of the various expenses. And that's, as a 501(c)(3) what we're required. If we were to go to get a grant, we would have to provide our tax return. That is what is required. Does anybody have any questions?
So it is, is it itemized on the contributions that you get or the grants?
It, from the expenditure standpoint or from the income?
Income.
The income and the contributions, there's line one, which is contribution, gifts, grants, and other amounts received. And then, then line two is program service revenue, and then government fees and contracts, that's included in there. So yes, it is itemized on the public record 990 on the IRS website.
But the town's contribution on the contract, that wouldn't be itemized on that, would it?
That's included on there, because that's income stream in for our contract with, with the town. So yes, that, that is included on there. All, all the income and expenses for the Long Beach Volunteer Fire Department are all on one tax return. You pay us as, I think of it almost like a grant, but it's a, a grant for services. So we have our own expenditure responsibility with that money that we receive from the town. And just like any other grant or, they would require to see the 990 and to see, you know, the, the breakdown of the, the expenses on there, which is on our, like I said, it's open to public records. So, it's all under the same accounting records. You know, I know there's been talk about a double entry accounting system. I don't even know, know where somebody came up with that. Like, it doesn't even make sense. We have two bank accounts, all under the same ID number. All the expenses, all the income are reported on this tax return. That's as plain as black and white as you can get, so.
We also, John, apply for grants as often as we can. We've been successful in some cases. We've gotten a grant from the Long Beach Civic Association. We've gotten three or four other grants. We've been very active on getting grants to pay for things. We've bought some new pagers and radios and things with some grants we've gotten through. I forget which ones, Meg, you can maybe itemize them, like...
Yeah, we, we've been trying to get grants from like the DNR. Brian and, Bryant and myself have been applying for grants from the healthcare foundation of LaPorte. That's more centralized, more so on LaPorte, but we're trying to bring them over to, to Long Beach as well. So, we've applied for grants on an annual basis for them, and for some of the bigger expenditures too, the, the replacement of our SCBAs. I mean, it's just, we're competing to get god knows how many other grantees that want money, so. And with the uncertainty that people were facing in the past year, then it turned out to be a positive year for a lot of these private foundations. You know, we're still waiting to hear back on some of the grants that were submitted, so. Fingers crossed.
I think, I think the biggest, I don't wanna say issue or concern or question that people have, or at least I hear from anyway, is they feel that they're not, they're not transparent. They're, you know, department, you know, asks for contributions, which they do every year, which is great. You know, people send in some money, whether, what, whatever it is they send in, but then at that point, it's, you know, how much money did you get on that, uh, fundraiser? How much did you make?
It's all on this, it's all on the tax return.
I, I understand.
And all the expenses related to it are on the tax return as well. As a nonprofit, a 501(c)(3), we have to spend the funds in relation to our mission and vision to maintain our exempt status. And so if we were to go and spend it on a Ferrari, obviously that would not be related to the exempt status of the, you know, the, the fire department. So, I mean, overall, you can see our total expenses and our total money we bring in, and there's an excess or a deficit on every single tax return. Now, some of that's timing, whether or not we received the money from the town, you know, whether it was in January or December, or when we received some bigger donations. One thing you have to keep in mind is Blake, my brother, he's a CPA, myself, we do the books. It's tax season for me, so this doesn't get done until after May 5th, or April 15th. It's just, we do it for free, so, you know, it's one of those things where it's gonna get put on the back burner until we get past the deadline. So, what is tax return?
And just to add there, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at one now. You know, it, it looks like the 2018 filed in 2019, and, I mean, there are schedules there that show the previous years as well, so it stacks up. And it, and Megan, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm, I'm not the CPA, but all of that info, it, it essentially looks, it's, it's cumulative. You can look back at it, at a year and look back at previous years. So, right now I'm looking at one from 2018 back to 2014, I think it is. So, and it, and it shows contributions, expenses, and it breaks it down, you know, there's the form, but then the schedules have the details in it that I, it seems like you guys are asking for, that are all public record and available. You know, I, that part of it, I don't know. So I don't know if it's miscommunication or misinformation, but I, I pulled it up here when Megan said it, and it's...
I think there's been this perception, John Coker, over the years, that there's some golden...
No, well, that's, yeah, you may be right, but, you know, how many, how many people out there gives on the internet and finds the IRS thing and pulls it up? Most people don't know how to do that. They don't know. It's all public, Megan says right, she's absolutely correct, it's public. But how many people actually do it? Probably, I'm guessing, hardly any.
So, right in this contract, that when they file it, they give a copy to the town? What's, I mean, that, does that take care of it?
I'm, well, actually, since 2011, Chris, they have not submitted their annual expenses, so.
To who?
To the town.
Okay. I was looking, I mean, I was just speaking...
That's in the original contract, and they took it out for the new one. And those were, those were some of my concerns. They're supposed to...
What, what precisely are your concerns, Mary Lou? I'm not clear.
Nothing. I don't have any, I love the fire department, but my concerns is you took out any accountability to the town. You no longer have to submit a budget, you don't have to tell us what you...
Mary Lou, I submitted a budget to you last week, did you see it?
John, I'm talking about your new contract.
I'm talking about the budget I just submitted for the new contract that I sent to you last week.
Okay, but you excluded it from your new contract in the beginning, until I said, where is it?
That's not true at all. We, we're willing to sub...
You want me to give you the, what you sent to us?
Mary Lou, if this, if this is your idea of what we're gonna get accomplished tonight, we're not gonna get anywhere. If you...
Well, John, if you keep talking to me like that...
You feel like you're not getting information from us, you need to tell us what you need, and we will get it for you. This implication that we're, this implication that we're not transparent, and this implication that we're sitting on a bunch of money, and this implication that, you know, I don't, I don't appreciate it, first of all. Second of all, none of it's true. Third of all, if you want something entered in, if you want something in this contract that gives an accounting of our spending, we'll be happy to do that for you.
It, it seems to me that, my understanding was this, that we were just going to leave the language as it was in the old, because the revised, I think, took out some language and made it simpler. And Mary Lou's point was, just to make sure, there were a couple provisions in there in her comments, to make sure that the town had the ability, that it was required as part of this contract, to justify those expenses. Now, I don't, I don't know, maybe...
Here's one of the problems I have with one of the things that Mary Lou was concerned about. We cannot afford the timeframe that's required to present maintenance issues to the town council to get approved. None of the other departments in this town do that. If they have a repair budget, or, I'm sorry, if they have a repair item in the street department, or if one of the squad cars needs a new motor, or if something else doesn't approach big dollars, they go get it done, and then Bill pays the bill. I don't know why all of a sudden the fire department has to be in a whole new category where you wanna see every maintenance bill before...
John, it's not all of a sudden, it's been in the contract, and you're not like the street department or the police department.
In what regard?
You're an outside service.
Not like them, Mary Lou.
You're an outside service.
Well, I'm, I appreciate your sentiment, I'm glad to hear that from you, that we're an outside service.
Well, you are.
We were part of the town, Mary Lou.
I, I, I think from a legal aspect, though, that the, the difference is those departments are budgeted, right? And so, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just looking at what the nuance here. The depart, the fire department is a separate legal entity, and so if, if we want to be treated the, the same, right, that the, in the language, or, or if there's an ability to do that, the police department, water department, et cetera, they are part of the town and budgeted for, and, you know, whether there's a fund in the police department for car maintenance, et cetera, I think that's the difference, so.
Well, I'll beg to differ, Chris. We're budgeted, when we sat down in 2011 with the administration at that point, we all were, we all wanted to streamline what the budget for the fire department would be, so that there weren't any, any surprises. We, we, it was a long, hard-fought negotiation, and we sat down and said, okay, what have we spent over the last few years? What's a reasonable amount of money, so that we don't have to worry about having enough to pay for the bills for the equipment and things that we needed, and the, on the trucks, and the clothing allowance that we get, which is $200 a year per man, which has been the same for the 45 years I've been doing this, it's never been increased. So, you know, we've been very frugal with the dollars that we spend. And when we sat down and negotiated that contract... And when we sat down and negotiated that contract, we came up with this line item budgeted amount, which is in the budget every year. The twenty eight thousand has been in the budget since the contract was initiated. Now, Mary Lou, the fact that we don't come back and tell her about every nickel and dime we spend, if that's something that we need to do, we can start doing that. We felt that when we had the twenty eight thousand, which, again, you need to realize what that percentage is of the town's budget. We're such a small, we're like a ward on the back end of the town, really, when you think about the kind of money we're talking about here. So, you know, we're willing to do whatever you guys want to see. If you want to see a bunch of detail on what we spend, we could come up with that. I don't see why it's necessary. Again, none of the other departments do that, but if that's what you want to see, that's fine, we can do.
Well, that's why my question of will the, will the nine ninety and the supporting schedules serve that same purpose? Will that give enough detail that that the town can review and get a good idea?
Can I ask a procedural question? This is Ernie Summers.
Go ahead.
Uh, the question is, is this treated like a council meeting where there's going to be public comment at a defined time? Or is anybody chime in with that comment?
You know, we've got a pretty small, small audience, so go ahead, and whenever what you want to say is germane, go ahead.
I have two points. Uh, first goes back to Mike Johnstone's first comment. Does a one-time purchase of equipment really belong in an evergreen contract? Or should it be a single point contract? Because it seems, we're, this is going to renew every year, roll over year to year, and we're going to have the same equipment purchases provision in there if it's in the the main contract. That's a question for all of you to debate. The second question is, I hear what Megan was saying about you're five oh one C three, and you're going to be governed by the laws governing a five oh one C three. But how does that square with the Roman, Roman eight, A and B, solely for the benefit of the department and not the town? And that's in both A and B. And can you talk about that a little bit?
Ernie, what's the, what's the clause?
It's a Roman, Roman numeral eight of fundraising and contracting for services. Paragraph A is the fundraising, which we've talked about a little bit. And paragraph B is fire department grants, which we've talked about a little bit. But all the money that comes from those is for the benefit of the department and not the town.
Well, that's a matter of semantics, I guess, but yeah, we we would not want to raise a bunch of funds and turn it over to the town's general fund. If we raise funds for the, I don't think that would be fair to the people that donate it to our fundraising efforts. If they think they're giving it to the fire department, I don't know that we want to turn it into the general fund. Essentially, anything that's donated to the fire department would be for the use of the fire department.
I just think you should talk about it, and the contract should be clear in reflecting what you decide. I don't think this is clear.
Well, I I think that it's clear. I I do want to go to Ernie's point to point out Mike's original. I I have reviewed a few other volunteer fire department contracts. You know, again, they're public. I do think that it's, it's a valid point that it may not belong in here. The issue becomes what is the, you know, John Wall's comment is, what what's the town's motivation and or skin in the game, for lack of a better description? So the fire department knows we're going to have equipment in the town. And maybe that's a separate one, maybe it's part of the end, I I don't know. I don't disagree, because this is a services contract. So, yes, that is absolutely true. So maybe we, you have an intent language in there, and and then the rest, so that that's, it's not a disagreeable thing. But I I do think that you probably need to have a mutual termination, because at any point, if the town taps out and decides, we're not going to, you know, because it is standard, the town is generally the one responsible for funding, right? The equipment, the building, et cetera. And so there there has to be some kind of discussion and thought about how to, how does each other, how do you give each other some security, right? The town's commitment to the department and the department's commitment to maintaining those things and providing good services.
One thing I'll mention, Chris, relative to other department contracts, I don't know which departments you were looking at, but we're a little bit unique. Some of our sister volunteer departments, the fire departments actually own the equipment, so that's why they may not have had their equipment.
And to your point, they're bigger, they're county, yeah, they're a little, they're bigger departments. I I don't disagree with that point either, that, you know, it is.
You know, I'll just chime in again, I think it's an important issue. Um, and I don't believe it should be part of the service contract, should be dealt with in a formal way, a formal request from the fire department to the town, and we should sit down and analyze that. I'm hearing from Meg, we're not going to have, we're not going to file tax returns until May. You know, we need to have a full financial picture of what this means. And I will say that in reviewing the twelve thirty one financials for the town, there is a shortfall that will be caught up with the grant for stop twenty four. Essentially, we're spending all of our revenue. So if there's another hundred thousand dollars of capital expenditures on an annual basis, and I understand, John, that we're not, we're not putting the cash out there, I understand the accounting piece of that. But if you take the worst end of your estimates of these things, it's going to be, and I, and I was using longer depreciations, not shorter depreciations. And so using a shorter one is a more conservative approach from an accounting standpoint, I'm okay with that. But we're talking, if we're talking a hundred thousand dollars a year, there's not money in the budget for that now, from a revenue perspective. There's not.
Well, first of all, we we're talking kind of in some generalities here, Mike. If we built the station, there's lots of ways you can do a a building corporation and lease it back. You can lease the trucks, there's other ways of accomplishing this from a financial perspective, and I know you know more about that than I do. Let me make one quick point, and I don't, I guess my problem is, you know, you have to realize that the history has been that every time the town gets broke, the fire department gets shorted. You go back to Tom Ringo's administration, when the water was up back in the mid eighties, and they had to put a bunch of riprap down at the lake. And, you know, he sat down with us in a restaurant and said, sorry, guys, we can't help you this year. And then, you know, we were, we basically, our fundraising was nowhere near what it is today, and we were just barely able to survive those years. So that's the history. Only we, we just, we don't feel like we need to, we we just need some kind of assurance that you're going to provide the equipment that we need. We, we don't get the warm and fuzzy when we go decades without getting any attention. So you're going to be gone in four, you know, whoever's going to be gone in four years, we we need to get some assurance that the town is going to provide us with what we need. One quick thought here, Chris, on page two, under Roman numeral two, the term of the agreement discusses a a termination by either party with notification, so that's already in the contract.
But it's a year, it's a year notice. If I read that correctly.
I I think the contract ought to have a date certain, one-year contract, two-year contract, but not an open-ended contract where you got to give a year notice in advance. All right.
Why would you want to have an annual contract with your fire department, John?
To see, to make sure we have money to fund the fire department, to fund the fire department. I I want to get back to what I said originally. We ought to have a meeting, a works workshop, whatever you want to call it, specifically for these equipment and capital needs for the fire department. I understand exactly the frustration with John Wall's saying. You know, he's been on this department for years and years and years, and he's probably asked every single year, and it gets put, put off and put off. I think we ought to make a decision whether you're going to do it or we're not going to do it. So that they know that they're either going to have a department or they're not going to have a department. And we got to know, we, I feel, we need a department, but we got to be able to fund it. And can we fund it? I don't know. I don't know. And that's what we need, people like Megan and Mike, to work the numbers so we can see. And if we can't figure out a way, the way we can, there are different ways to finance these things. As I'm sure Mike knows and Megan knows, I've seen, you know, there's lots of ways to finance different projects. It's uh, it's pretty daunting if you say, well, we got to come up with a hundred thousand dollars this year to pay for the bond issue or for the loan loan thing. Right now, I don't think we can, but might, there might be a way that we could. But we got to look into that, and I think we ought to center our attention on how we're going to do it, not to just talk about it and make spurious allegations about how much money they have or don't have, or we have and don't have, and deal with facts, and then address those issues and go forward. And I think it could be done, can't be done tonight, but it can be done, I'm confident it can be done. But we got to see what we're dealing with. Is 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 it a eight hundred thousand dollar building, a million dollar building? Are we going to buy a brand-new fire truck with all the bells and whistles? Or are we going to try to find one that some community defaulted on, and we can buy it used that's good? You know, I mean.
Yeah, I I understand what you're saying, John, I appreciate your sentiments. If if I, if I had some kind of assurance that we were going to sit down in the next six months and hammer this out and come up with a plan, I'd feel more comfortable.
I don't want to wait six months. I think we ought to do it.
Well, I hear you, but we wait, I've been waiting thirty years, so.
I understand, that's why I want to do it sooner.
If 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 the town wants to make a commitment to us tonight, and 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 we do some sort of, I mean, look, the only way we can hook anybody is with some kind of written document, because everybody goes home after this meeting and it all goes away. So if we don't have a written document, we're right back where we were, you know. So if you're telling me that the the intent of this town council is to sit down in the next couple of months and come up with a capital plan for the fire department, first of all, we're going to have to do that for the whole town anyway. We've got issues with the, you know. But but again, if if you're willing to commit to that, in in the next town council meeting, you guys commit to some sort of a a plan, then, you know, we can hold off on signing this contract if you'd like. I I think we can talk about some of the other things that Mary Lou's concerned about as well. But if you're willing to do that, that's fine, we, you know, we'll roll over one more time, but.
Well, that's my suggestion, I don't know how much everybody else feels about it, just my suggestion.
Well, maybe one of the outs besides, you know, adjusting the year termination, John Wall, is that if the town does not make a commitment to the capital, that that gives the fire department the opportunity to terminate the agreement. Not that you want to, but, you know, again, there's an ability that if if they don't, because, you know, there does have to be a commitment, and it is long-term, so.
I mean, you realize, John, that thirty, we're asking for thirty eight thousand, you realize what that represents in terms of the budget, don't you?
Not a whole lot.
I mean, it's pennies, John, it's pennies.
No, you're going to tell me.
Talk about whether we can finance a fire department, we've been doing our damnedest to make sure that we don't cost the town very much money. And if and if you look back over the history, we are such a small ward on the backside of this town in terms of financial expenditures, it's almost laughable. So when you talk about financing the fire department, that's, that's a little disingenuous. We we've been a very small part of the town's expenditures for decades. So, and and that's been by intent, we we've worked hard to do that. Grants, pushing equipment, maintaining equipment, doing the right thing. So so that's, you know, that's our side of the argument. So that's why we feel like we need some sort, there are other clauses in this contract about things that are statutorily required, that the town sometimes does and sometimes doesn't. We've had to fight for insurance coverages over the years. Uh, we had a town attorney, the prior, about three attorneys ago, that told us we didn't have any insurance covering us, which, you know, we had to look through all that and remedy all that. So, you know, the relationship's been strained at times. But we've sat still, and we've listened, and we've tried to do the best we could, and we've, you know, we've survived on a shoestring in a lot of years. Again, this misperception that there's some pot of gold at the end of the fire department's rainbow is just a total crock. But at any rate, we're willing to sit down and negotiate with everybody. But let's, let's be serious about this capital equipment, because I'm telling you, at three o'clock in the morning when your house is burning down, and we drop a driveshaft or the pump blows up, you're not going to be a happy camper. I'm talking about, we're talking about, heard, hold on, Ernie, when we're talking about an annual expenditure over a ten- or twenty-year period of of a hundred thousand dollars, again, that's small potatoes compared to a lot of the other things this town spends money on.
Well, I don't think that John's and Mike's comments were related to the thirty eight thousand, they may have separate comments about that, but I thought they were talking about the capital expenditure.
We are. That's what I was.
Let me put it to you this way, Ernie. We're paying off, I forget how much we spent on the town hall, I want to say it was three mil or something like that, we paid that off. We made that commitment to the townspeople that we weren't going to live in a ragtag building. When the street department garage burned down, we decided we were going to put up a decent steel building and put some decent equipment in it for our town employees. When the old school had issues with HVAC, we went in there, we made a commitment, we put some decent HVAC in there. When the, when the police department has problems with squad cars, or they need ammunition, we make a commitment to them. That's all we're asking for, make a commitment to the fire department for our requirements, to keep doing what we've been doing for almost as long as the town's been in existence. This fire department was formed shortly after the town was. So we're celebrating our hundred-year anniversary this year, and we're asking for just a commitment from the town to keep doing what we want to do, which is serve the people of this town, but we need the equipment to do it. So if you want to sit down, John, with me, and we'll, and we'll have our fire commission, I know Mike wants to be on the fire commission, you can all come. The whole world can come. But we need to get serious about this, just like we need to get serious about the rest of the capital equipment in this town. We've been, we've had, we've been playing ostrich with our heads in the sand about capital equipment in this town. You know, the the loader that we that we had to take off leased this year, that's not garbage equipment, they're not running around in garbage equipment, neither should the fire department.
John, this is about the fire department, don't bring up the town, you're representing the fire department.
I beg to differ, Mary Lou, I represent the town. I'm on the town council, just like you.
But tonight, you're.
You say I don't represent the town, Mary Lou, that's a ridiculous.
Well, I mean, you're, wait a minute, don't talk, you're not going to bully me in front of everybody, okay? And that's what you've done, so that I'm quiet. I don't agree with you, but I don't call you out on it. So all I'm asking is, listen, you don't need to bring up the town's business, we're talking about the fire department, that's a wonderful place, okay? And there's a lot of us that really appreciate what they do, but we're also talking about a big expenditure. And so don't take that away from them. I mean, they are, who could ask for a better group than the volunteer fire department? But you have to agree, you've been secretive in the past, and I think that's what cast the spell. Okay, all right.
Agree to disagree on that point, Mary Lou.
Okay, well, I'm married to somebody that came to a meeting, and you wouldn't show, show him and another person the two books, and you said no and hell no.
I wasn't the chief back then, so I don't know.
Okay, but I'm, you you quote other things, because you've been there a long time, so that casts, that casts a doubt in people's minds.
That's why we've tried to work at being transparent over the.
Okay, so I will work with Megan, I I will work with her. And, you know, if Megan could send to bill the form every year, that would solve a lot of issues, because the town center is where people ask us the questions, you know, what's going on?
Well, I'd appreciate if you'd call me when you have a question, Mary. Because here's part of the problem with this town and why I get so upset, because I keep hearing all this innuendo that comes from, John's spoken about some innuendo tonight, and you've spoken about some innuendo tonight. Mike's not around long enough to know some of the innuendo. But first of all, I resent it, you can tell that by my tone of voice here.
Oh, yeah, I can, and it and it stops any of us from wanting to even talk to you. So why wouldn't I go to somebody that's always helped me and I'll just ask Megan, what is it? So she'll tell me, I don't care.
Well, when you, when you, you want to talk about innuendo, you frost me a little bit, I apologize.
Well, I'm, you know what? Unless you heard it come out of my mouth, don't accuse me of it, I haven't said anything about it. And I've always been supportive.
Megan, you had something you wanted to say?
There's a couple of things. Getting back to the cost of the the replacement of the truck and the remodel of the fire station, I did an additional analysis when we first started investigating this and I first started getting more involved from the financial side and, you know, leadership side of the of the apartment. And based on the number of households we had in Long Beach, the annual cost per household for just those two capital expenditures is a hundred and thirty-six dollars a year. That's less than your Comcast bill. So to, you know, to say that, you know, or to not include this, I understand the the legal side of it, not including the service contract, but to to make such a big deal about something where you've got people coming and living here from Illinois that have large amounts of income, that are now moving even more, and that love our fire department, and are so grateful when we show up there at three AM for somebody to question a hundred and thirty-six dollars a year. And mind you, that's only for the first ten years of the fire truck loan. That falls off after the first ten years, and then it goes down to fifty-nine dollars a year for the remaining ten years of the remodel. So let's think about this on an annual basis. The hundred thousand dollars is scary, but let's think about it on our per-household cost. That's something that really has to be thought about. The other thing is, I do this for free, my brother does the accounting stuff for free. So to say you're going to get a report January thirty first of the prior year, I'm sorry, you're not. I don't even give that to my nonprofit clients that pay us.
Megan, I'm not asking. Megan, I'm not asking.
No, no, and, and it's not even probably gonna happen. You might be lucky in May. But the problem is, is that I just don't have the time. And so part of it is, if, if you want a summarized estimated tentative profit and loss after the first of the year, I can try to get it to you. But that's just the other thing too. I think when we file the 990, I'd be happy to shoot you a copy electronically. It takes some time for it to get uploaded on the IRS website. But just something to think about in the fact that, you know, I'm volunteering.
You are.
Side. I'm doing the financial side and I have a full-time job that I'm working 65 hours a week right now. So, you know, it's just, we're a volunteer, you know, I, I know it's a contract, a service contract. And, you know, you know, it makes sense that we're, you know, taking, you know, the time to look at this contract. You know, when I signed a contract with Comcast or, you know, some other smaller company for any service, I don't ask to see their daily records of what they spend their money on because I don't really care. All I care is they provide the service and they're there at 3:00 AM and they put out the fire and they give me CPR in the middle of the night. That's all I care about. And that's what this town should care about and this town council should care about. And the fact that we've got younger people on this department that will be at your house in three to five minutes to save your life. That's the big picture. And I'm sorry to raise my voice, but it's been a lot of misinformation that's been spread about this department and I take it to heart.
You know, I'm, I'm actually totally amazed that this has taken us this long to discuss this paragraph when in fact, all I said was we should take this out of the service agreement, make it a separate document and address the long-term capital expenditures in a, in a, in an orderly fashion, understand the numbers. Quite frankly, I can't vote in favor of this the way it stands today. I can't, I don't like paragraph C. I don't like the way it's written and I don't like the intent of it. And I think it's a separate issue from the service. That's all I said. Since then, this conversation's got completely blown out of whack. And I think I'm asking a very logical question, making a logical point, and I'm not getting any kind of logical response back from Mr. Wall. So I, I forgive me. And John, you and I talked about this over the phone. And at that point, I thought we had an understanding that we could make this a separate issue and pull it out of the service agreement, but that doesn't appear to be the case. And so I will tell you right now, if nothing else changes, this does not come out of this agreement, I can't sign this, I can't vote for this contract.
Didn't we talk about Chris changing the language in there so that it was clear? That what, that we would be looking into that issue and that.
I actually thought that John Wall said, let's punt this contract until we have another meeting to, and get a firm commitment. So I, and Mr. Johnstone, I, I don't, your point is clear and I, I, I actually thought communication between you and John Wall had that issue. What I do think is there's a lot of, uh, deep seated other things that have come out that aren't related to your valid point. So.
Questionable things that have come from the past that.
There's a lot of.
On a daily basis. And yeah, I mean, it's, it's tough. And so, you know, when, when you get questioned about stuff, but you don't get questioned when you show up to somebody's house to help them, that's very good stuff. And again, I get it, Mike. You know, you want to have this be as clear as can be, but at the same time, this has been a bunch of false promises. And so I'm with John Wall in that, I mean, yeah, I, and I'd be happy to sit on the fire commission or whatever, but because younger people, you know, we are the future of the department, but you just wanna make sure your truck is gonna be working at 3:00 AM when, you know, it shows up to your house to put out the fire. And my guess goes back further, further, you know, obviously before you became involved. And there's hurt feelings, I think, with this original department and the relationship between the town that I think is hopefully unamended, but it spirals in these types of discussions because of those unresolved issues.
Well, and that's why I would like to have a meeting sooner rather than later about the capital improvements to get something in line so we can tell, that we can negotiate with the fire department and, and show how we're gonna go forward, not six months or a year and a half from now, but how we're planning to go forward now. And, and, and I don't see why we can't do that.
What information would you like ahead of that? For instance, you know, from my perspective, we can provide, you know, the general, uh, structures of what Indiana law deals with, you know, the, the governmental entities and volunteer fire department. What other, what other info would you like to see put together so that we could have a productive meeting? Because.
I'm, I'm talking about the capital investment, the, the contract and everything. I assume we can get that worked out.
I mean, but how those work and how it's contracted, but that capital investment, what information can be put together for you and, and for everybody who's gonna participate? So I'm asking, we said that, what information can we put together so that it's productive and we, we get that information out there? What's lacking and what does everybody need to see?
Some firm numbers on how much equipments we're, we're, we are requesting or the department's requesting. Firm numbers, not, well, like a truck's gonna cost around $800,000. Well, around flop, exactly. What, what are the, I know there's been a lot of discussion with the building. You know, where are we on that? And, and what was our cost per square foot and how much is that building gonna cost us? And then try to figure out how are we gonna pay for it?
So, so one issue with this, and I, I was involved early and I'm not, and then I'm gonna defer to those that know on each side. The difficulties with those, the firm numbers, I, and I just happened to strike up conversation with somebody that moonlights. He's a, he's a firefighter from another, um, town, full-time. And he sells on the side. And he was talking about the investment and doing these things. Or the, those who have put bids on the building, to have an architect put plans together or do those things and get the hard numbers, I think is difficult because that's what costs the money, right? You have to pay for those and the plans. So getting those hard numbers, we, we were meeting the town down, down the pike on that a little bit and then needed some surveys and there was some work with an entity. Um, but those things cost thousands. And so that part of it, I, I just wanna make sure we're on the same page. I'm not challenging you, John Coker. Those are reasonable.
But what, but what is a list of what things do we need? I, I mean, something firm, so we know what we're dealing with and you have an idea of what the costs are.
It's in Exhibit A. We gave you some budget numbers in Exhibit A. If you want higher, look, a fire, you have to contract today for a fire truck delivered a year from now. So if we wanna spec out a fire truck, we need to know that a year from now, we want, we're gonna be able to pay for it. So we give you a budget number and you say to us, it's no different than buying the end loader that the town bought. You, you have to spec it out and then you go out and get some quotes and then you figure out exactly what you need. So we can do that. The fire station itself, we, we've tried to do that on a number of occasions. During the last administration, we tried to get a service contract or a professional engineering design build contract put together with Chester. The town committed to a $10,000 expenditure for that initial design phase. We, the fire department coughed up two grand to keep the process moving because we never did get the 10 from the town to make the thing work. So if you're, again, if you're willing to.
See, there we go. There we go. I mean, we gotta make a commitment, do it one way or the other. And so we can make a decision. I mean, I.
So, so how do you propose that you're gonna give me an assurance that we're gonna do this tonight?
We're gonna do what?
Besides having you sign this contract, how do I get some assurance that we're gonna do what you're proposing?
Well, this is my suggestion. You gotta have at least two other people saying we're gonna go forward with a some sort of a meeting to determine the way forward on the capital improvements. Not on the rest of the contract. The rest of the contract, I assume we can hammer out. So, I mean, unless you wanna say on the contract that, okay, then, then we're gonna, what are we gonna do? I mean, what are we gonna commit to? I mean, what you're saying, John, is we gotta make a commitment sooner or later on these capital improvements. What I hear Mike saying is, we can't afford the capital improvements right now. So what I wanna know is, well, what can we afford? How can we finance them? How soon could we do them? That's what I wanna know.
Well, why don't we do this? If we wanna hold off on the contract for a little bit and we wanna get John, Mike and you and whoever else, Mayor, if somebody else wants to come, that's fine, although I, I don't know if we can have us all at the fire commission without having a public meeting. I don't know how that works, but if we can make the fire commission a fire, a public meeting, we can all be there. But again, I don't wanna go through this circus again and have nowhere at the end of the meeting, so.
I agree.
The fire department will come, this was our workshop where we were supposed to hammer some of this out and I don't think we've made progress one. So I'll tell you what we'll do. We'll, we'll come up with some more numbers, some tighter numbers for you. And if you'll commit to meeting with the fire commission over the next three months or so, every month, and we'll sit down and try to hammer all this out. And, and then, you know, we'll, we'll sit still for another few months. I, I would like to spend some time on the rest of the contract if there are other issues that people have. I know Mary Lou questioned the amount. Somebody mentioned, you mentioned a minute ago, you didn't wanna commit to anything beyond a year. I'd like to hammer some of that out tonight if we can, if we're gonna sit still on all the capital equipment.
John, I would suggest that Mike Johnstone's on the fire commission, so I don't think you can have any of us there unless it's a Zoom meeting. We got to hear it. Because that would be more than three, three people, three council people.
But if it's a public meeting, Mayor.
Oh, yeah, if it's a public meeting, yes.
That, that's right, yeah.
It's a public meeting.
If you, if you guys are gonna commit to us to, to get serious about it, then, then let's do that. But I mean, I really need a commitment here to people because I, you know, I'm talking decades without commitments here and I just, we're just kinda fed up.
Well, John, this is not the people, this is not the same group that, decades, so we're all new except Bob Lemay and he's got four years on this, so.
Yeah, but Mayor, you, you, you gotta realize, I mean.
I've lived, I've lived here 48 years, okay? I get it.
I've been on the fire department for over 40 years, so I mean, I get it too, but it's just, we can't keep operating, you know, you don't expect any of the rest of this town to operate with old junk and we, we just, we can't keep doing it. All right, so if you guys are, if you're gonna commit to me to that tonight, John, that you're gonna make the next three fire commission meetings and we'll set the schedule.
When is the next meeting, commission meeting?
Well, I told Mike we were gonna set the schedule tonight because we're all here.
Okay.
Okay.
Mike, when are you back? Or you wanna do it over Zoom or what's, I don't know what your schedule looks like.
I'm back the first week of April, so Zoom is my preference, obviously.
You guys wanna do an evening meeting?
Yeah, it's fine.
I'm retired, so it's got, some of you guys that have commitments. John, what's your schedule look like, Mayor?
Evenings are good for me.
Evenings are okay.
All right, you wanna go that first week in March, like the Thursday, the 11th or something, or?
Let me, let me get the calendar and make sure we don't have any other town meetings on that date. Could you have me?
We have a police commission meeting. That's next Thursday.
Police commission meeting is the fourth, John.
Yeah.
So that's Thursday. I wonder if there's, Bob Lemay said he's gonna look it up.
Uh, it looks like Thursday evening is open as far as the town.
The 11th?
Yeah, and then we. I'm sorry, the 11th?
We can have it be the second Tuesday of the month from here on out, or second Tuesday of the month for the next three months if you guys.
Tuesday or Thursday, John?
I'm sorry, Thursday, Mayor. You're right.
I'm good with that.
Mary Lou mission.
What time?
It's up to you, John. You're probably tighter than the rest of us getting up here.
On Thursday, I'm, I'm up there. I'm, I'm up at home, I'm home on, uh, anytime after three or four.
Well, what's good for the people that are on the fire commission, the, uh, the volunteers?
We're on duty 24/7, Mayor. We'll be there.
I know that, but I'm, uh, John, I'm giving you a compliment, so take it.
I'll tell you what, I'm looking at three, March 11th, April 8th and May 13th. Now the proud, it's the, I'm sorry, May, May 13th, April, or April 8th and March 11th.
Okay.
That's the next three second Thursdays.
Thursdays, okay.
You guys can make those. How does that look for everybody?
What are we talking?
Well, that's up to whoever, somebody throwing out there. I can make it anytime. So whatever you guys, whoever's got tight schedules, look.
What, when can Megan Applegate help us?
She's busy through the 15th of April.
Yeah, I would imagine she doesn't want anybody to talk to her promptly after this meeting, right?
I mean, if it's Zoom, I can listen in and then just, I mean, after, or 5 o'clock would be preferred again, but I mean, you guys, you, I'll be able to listen in. I don't have fieldwork or anything scheduled that day.
Five, 5:00 PM works for you, Megan?
Yeah.
Let's go with 5:00 PM then.
Five.
Okay.
I will go ahead and schedule those meetings on Zoom. And they'll go on the website.
Thanks, Bob.
Hey, Bob, this, Bob Lemay?
Yeah.
Dave Alvarez, can I just, I've been trying for the last 30 minutes to, to get in and I just finally said something. Can I say something as the former chief?
Yep, go right ahead.
I'm gonna make this very quick. The fire department, the town's gonna be 100 years old this year. Fire department's been 90, uh, will be 90 for years, for years. Florio Susie would, we make requests, he, he pays the bills for us. And then what happened was, um, Tom Ringel had talked to us and said, and this, and John alluded to it back in, I'm thinking the early 2000s. He said, you're, you're not gonna be able to buy a new truck, which they, the town had said was gonna happen because of other, uh, requirements. We then, he said, if you can pay your own bills for a while through our fundraising, the town will reimburse you for those bills because that's when the tax crisis was going on in the county. We did that. Then what happened was, we would submit bills and actually Mary Lou was on the council and she told me, um, in a session that Bobby Sokowski, the police chief at the time, was approving those bills. And I couldn't understand that. And long story, well, the, the long and short of it was there was $28,000 worth of items that we had submitted for equipment and service things that we were never reimbursed for. I carried it, we carried it in as a receivable, then we wrote it off. And so all this type of activity and craziness led us, John and I sat in the basement of Bob Angelo's, uh, home. And this is where we decided to put this town agreement together. And that was the 2011 agreement. On, on that agreement, we wanted, we, the fire department, wanted to make certain that our capital needs were outlined in Schedule A. And John referred to that. So we provided what our long-term needs were 10 years ago. And we've been trying to work through it. We, we were told that once the building's debt service, the, the town center, there should be money to move forward. Of course, that hasn't happened. We've tried to do some things to narrow it down. Out of our fundraising costs, we, well, I shouldn't say that. We spent $7,500 for getting some architectural plan design started. But once again, as Chris said, you can only go so far. And so we've got some drawings, we've got some other concepts. We've been trying to do this. And in the past, our department spent $40,000 on engine two as our contribution from our checking account that's fundraising. We spent $28,000 when we purchased Rescue Three. Our goal has always been to give as much money as we possibly can to our cause because it's all going for our benefit. And Mary Lou, you made a statement, there's been no accounting. Pete Vai votes, and I can't tell you, once or twice in the last five years, asked if he could have an accounting of the checks paid out of the, we have a separate checking account just for the town's money market, excuse me, for the town's contract income, the $28,000 a year that we've received. We've always had a separate account. We provided that to him when he requested it. To say nothing since 2011, that's not, that's not correct. So these are the things that we have been struggling for years. And I cannot for the life of me understand what has changed From the good old days of being a small department, taking care of our community to where. We are the bad guys and that's what the perception is. And everything that I hope you're all doing to schedule that we can get, put this stuff aside. Stick to the issues, ask the questions. And I used to say this at council meeting, will you, will you talk to me and not around me as the fire chief? And that was forever the process. Always talking around us and it was so frustrating. I just hope we can pick up our, uh, our pieces and start to move forward. And my thirty-six, thirty-seven years on the department, fourteen years is cheap, I take this very personally. Very personally. And I just felt I needed to give you a little bit of background to say, this is where we are. We, and, and, and the thing is, the schedule, the items that were on Schedule A are no different than what we've been put on it right now. I'm going to stop talking, but I just, I'm sorry, it took me so long to figure out how to open up the microphone, so I apologize. But I thank you for the time.
Alright, Mary, you, John, Mike, I think we addressed yours, we're going to hold off on the capital equipment till we have our meetings. Mary Lou, you sent me a page that had, uh, four or five things on it.
Right.
You wanted to discuss the amount of the increase and the automatic increases, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Sure.
What's up?
Well, I don't think we're, and I don't think we should have an automatic increase every year. Number one.
Well, we, we do that with the police contracts in Dunland and Michiana, it's just kind of a, again, we sat still for ten years, we don't get the Dunland money anymore because we don't provide ser. The town decided not to provide services to Dunland, uh, a year and a half ago or wherever it's been.
Do you remember, if you, if you were at the town meetings, it's because they wanted to charge them not twice as much, but triple. So they went with another person, another carrier.
Once again, Mayor, I wish you'd use facts instead of just.
No, that wasn't the case at all, Mary.
That was not the case at all, Mary Lou.
Dunland wanted, wanted to pay less per household than Long Beach paid and we said, no, you got to pay at least what we pay.
Okay, so let me see if I understand this right, because I attended the meetings and I think they were like fifty or sixty dollars. And Pete said, let's raise them to one sixty-two.
We wanted to charge them the same thing we charge our households, that's what we did, I don't have those absolute numbers.
One sixty-two is so far off the mark, Mayor, I don't know where you came up with that one. Look, here's what.
I don't appreciate, I don't question you in front of the public, but I'll get you those numbers and I mean it.
Well, I thought we'd come equipped to this meeting to talk about numbers, but apparently some of us aren't equipped. Okay, during the review of the proposed contract, you wanted to discuss the amount of the increase in the automatic increases. If you look at thirty-eight thousand dollars as opposed to the original twenty-eight from that ten-year-old contract. If you take twenty-eight and do some sort of a three percent inflation rate for the ten years that we've been out of this, you'd be somewhere close to the thirty-eight. In addition, we no longer get the half of the Dunland contract, that's why I wanted to talk about Dunland. We don't get that half of that money anymore, which is about five thousand. So we're really, we've been operating for the last couple of years at a five thousand dollars less than what we originally negotiated, that twenty-eight thousand dollars ten years before. So we're actually operating in a pretty much of a deficit for the last few years. But, but the point is, if you just use a three percent inflation rate for the ten years, you'd be over the thirty-eight, roughly speaking. Again, I gave you that budget last week, so you have an idea of what we're talking about with, to spend the thirty-eight on. So I think thirty-eight's a fairly reasonable number. As far as why we wouldn't want to have an acceleration clause in there, I don't know why you'd want to commit anywhere commercially or anywhere else without some sort of an acceleration clause.
I think the only issue that I have with the acceleration clause was, it's not really based on any economic, um. Realities in terms of when we sign this contract and when we, and when we review it. Again, we've got to give a year's notice to get out of the contract, which I think that's another discussion item. But three percent doesn't tie to anything and that was the only concern I had about that, John. But I'd also say that the budget you provided, thank you very much, by the way, is, I'm trying to reconcile that back to the thirty-eight thousand, this budget totals thirty-five thousand. And I don't see any line items in here for insurance premiums and I know that takes up a lot of, um, space in terms of close to the end of this contract, in terms of the insurance requirements. So. I'm, I'm confused, is this, is this budget that you submitted for thirty-five thousand supposed to be all-inclusive?
Well, it depends on what you mean by all-inclusive, Mike, and I know you're pretty green here, so you're going to have to get, you have to do a little more studying to understand the whole, the whole picture. The insurance coverages and the fuel and the, uh, the heat and the utilities in the building are all part of what the town does. In, in addition to the twenty-eight thousand dollar contract, so there are various pieces and parts of this and I'd be happy to show you all that. And Bill can share with you what he's, what he's got in his budget for, again, the utilities on the building and the fuel and, um. Those sorts of things, so, yeah, when you say all-inclusive, the, the overall cost to the town approaches what Megan was talking about a little while ago, or what Mary Lou is referring to. The per household cost roughly, what, what we were doing and to give Mary Lou the, her due, when we talked to Dunland. We were telling them that we, the intent at that point with the town council that was in place back then was that we were going to do the, the station addition. So we wanted Dunland to be aware during those contract negotiations that they needed to cough up some more money per household or in a total. To, to contribute what the Long Beach people were going to have to contribute for those additional capital expenditures. So that's why that number was creeping up and Pete did not want them to sign a multi-year agreement, which they requested, they did not want a single-year contract. And neither do we, really, and I don't think the town should negotiate a single-year contract for this, this type of service, but at any rate, that was the deal back then. We said, look, we, we need to include some of these costs in your ultimate number, in your multi-year contract, and that's why they balked at it and they went and went, went somewhere else. But. Mike, we can sit down and look at exactly what the town's, and Bill can talk to this, I don't know how, how tightly he keeps track of all those things, but. There are insurance dollars that are expended by the town independent of this thirty-eight and utility costs. And then there are occasional.
Yeah, I think I'd like, John, I don't mean to interrupt, and I'm not really trying to attack you, all I'm trying to do is understand the numbers, the. So it would be good to know those numbers in addition to the thirty-five and begin to reconcile back to thirty-eight some way, somehow, if that's possible.
Thirty-five, thirty-five with a ten percent contingency gets you to thirty-eight, that's where I want with that, Mike.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't see, I don't see that on your recap on that, so, and so you've, you've factored in a ten percent. The other thing is, in paragraph B, page four, the town is responsible for vehicle and equipment maintenance, which you and I talked about and I totally get. There's a line item on the budget that's sixty-one hundred dollars for truck service and repairs, is that one on the same?
No, when we have big maintenance bills, we come and see Bill and he helps us with them. We, there, there are times when, like, for instance, we've had clutches go out or we've had, you know, significant pump repairs that are multiple five figures. And it could be that we need to, you know, make some better definition of what the town covers and doesn't cover with a, with a threshold dollar amount, we haven't wanted to get into that level. That's why we kept this contract as inexpensive as it is. If you look at what Bill's expended, like, for instance, we, we had a new compressor, uh, for our SCBA units and Bill paid for that, uh, I'm sorry, I think we might have got that on a grant. But then we had the HVAC system went out and Bill picked up the cost of that for us. Bill, I forget what that was, if it was fifteen hundred bucks or so, I can't remember. We've had overhead doors go out, those are town bills, Mike, those are outside the contract. That's why we tried to put enough verbiage in here about what the town was required to provide, so. There are, there are areas that are gray, you know, there's times when Bill will pick something up if he, if he can, if he's got enough in, in our line item budget. That he can pay for it, he does, otherwise, you know, we, we pick it up with our twenty-eight. So there's not a hard and fast rule about, you know, a pencil goes to this budget and a, an eraser goes to the other budget, but we try to even it out in, in the long run.
Alright, I'm not worried about pencils and erasers and that kind of stuff, I, but I, but I am, but I would do want to know, and I, and I can't tell from this. And maybe I can get help from Bill on this, and I have financials for every month of twelve thirty-one and, and so far currently this year. I could probably pick my way through that and try to figure it out if it's broken out that, that finely, but. What is our true cost for the fire department? It's not thirty-eight thousand dollars, it's something thirty-eight thousand dollars plus insurance premiums, plus vehicle maintenance, plus whatever, right? And so I can't tell what the total cost is. Am I right?
That's, that's fair to say, that's true.
So I think.
We can get at those numbers, we can get at those numbers, I'm not asking you, I mean, at, at this point, if we're going to hold off on this, yeah, we can get some further definition at the fire commission meetings after you get a chance to talk to Bill.
And I'm not saying that, that it's a problem, I just say I don't know, that's all I'm saying.
John, there's some other questions that I have, uh, the, the, you, you were correct in raising the issue about Dunland going over to Michiana instead of us. But along with the fire department losing its share of that revenue, the town loses its share of that revenue. So do we have a good number, how many homes we are now serving without Dunland and is there any homes that we're serving outside of Long Beach?
Yeah, we're, I always use eleven hundred, I mean, Bill knows for sure, it's like eleven twenty.
Eleven forty.
Eleven forty. So that's where Megan came up with some of those numbers, she was knocking around, when you look at our twenty-eight, or I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Mike, if you took thirty-eight. And, and the insurance premiums and everything, she was knocking around, I think we figured it out at something like forty dollars a household, so if you take, just for round numbers, if you take forty dollars. Times eleven hundred. Yeah, that's about forty-eight or something, forty-four, forty-six. So I mean, you know, if you add all the other stuff in there, it's not a six-figure amount, it's somewhere between the thirty-eight.
And I wasn't implying that, I just, I still know what it is.
Yeah, well, I, I think you ought to know, I think that's a great point, we all ought to know.
Might I, might I just comment, uh, the, I didn't come prepared to quit to talk about insurance, but there are three insurance pieces that we, as we put this all together. One is, is the workers' comp with Liberty Mutual and that's quite insignificant because. The only thing that covers is hospitalization because there is no workers' comp because we don't have any salaries to cover. Uh, we also have a health insurance plan to cover, uh, you know, like a, like a long-term, short-term disability. If somebody gets hurt on the job and we've got that. And then there's a third piece, which is just the property and casualty insurance for the building. For the, for the fire trucks, for the equipment and that kind of thing. And I could put all those numbers together, uh, they come kind of mixed in with, with the rest of the property and casualty. But, uh, we could, we can pull out the numbers that relate just to the, the fire, the property. The workers' comp and the health insurance is very specific to just the fire department, but we can do all that.
Thank you, Bill.
Or what about your next one there, you were saying, you said you didn't like the increase, so why, why do you guys feel like there shouldn't be an acceleration clause?
I think there should be an acceleration clause, but I think there should be some terminology in there, some language in there that speaks to what, what are we looking at to make that decision about what it should be on an annual basis? I think it's reasonable to ask for, um, an increase, but I, I can't reconcile three percent versus inflation or your costs or anything else, I don't, I don't know. So I, agreeing to eight percent, whether it's one percent, three percent, ten percent, I just, there's nothing that I can, I can look at that number and say, oh, I understand how it's based. And that's where I was coming from, huh?
Well, we've traditionally done three percent on the employees over the last, how long have we been doing three percent, Bill? You're muted, Bill. You're muted, Bill, you're muted. There you go.
Three percent didn't work this year and there, there was one year that was here that we didn't do three percent. But yes, we have been doing three percent increases, uh, uh, most of the years I've been here.
Would anybody have a problem with tying this to the inflation rate?
I would. The CPI is not indicative of the kind of things that we have to buy, bud.
Well, then, tie it to inflation, inflation rate plus one percent, how's that?
The, the trouble with three percent across the board, that, you know, like, this, this contract here, if you go three percent, roughly works out about fifty-one thousand after ten years. You know, maybe that's reasonable, maybe it isn't, I don't know, but three percent. If you don't, if you aren't careful, you end up, as I think we're finding out on our wage studies, I don't know, we haven't seen the final results yet, but sometimes we can get. Over. The pay can get over, over, uh, over what should, should have, it should be for that particular job description, so. You know, I, I don't, a, a flat three percent, I think is unrealistic.
So what would, what would the alternate be then, what would the alternate suggestion be?
How about inflation rate plus one percent?
What would that be right now?
I don't know, we'd wake up, I'm sure we could find out, though.
Wouldn't be too bad, over the last couple of years, probably going to go up a little this year and you might end up paying more under that theory, more than three percent.
I think so too, if you look at what the administration's doing right now, your three percent's going to look real sweet in about three or four years. If you guys want to tie it to something else, I guess philosophically, if you're okay with an acceleration clause, let's just further define it at the, at the next. Commission meeting and you guys come equipped with what your suggestions are and we'll hammer it out.
I'm good with that.
It's fine, Mayor, do you still not want to see an, an acceleration clause or what's the scoop?
Fine with working on it in the next meeting.
Are we philosophically in favor of an acceleration clause then, or we're just going to hammer out the amount?
Yeah, I, I am, um, but again, I want to, I want to go back to the one-year cancellation on the agreement as it relates to this too. And so we don't, we're not on that topic right now, but I'd still like to visit that issue before we drop it, but I'm okay with the escalation clause.
Yeah, I think there needs to be an escalation clause, we're going to have to go through this process every year and I don't want to do that.
Me either. Alright, um, so it sounds like we're philosophically in favor of a, that acceleration clause and we'll hammer out how, what numbers we come up with at the meetings. Mary, you talked about, uh, what's that next point you had there?
Well, you got the part about we get, we get a spending thing every year, uh, that you guys left out that, um. Let's see. That for subsequent years, department shall submit an annual budget with a request for the following year's funding, no later than June first, so that would work out for Megan, she'll be done with it. Excuse me, she'll be done with the taxes, uh, and the fire commission and it'll be submitted to the town council for review. And then the next one I had was, um. Let's see. The use of the fire station on page three on the new one. They took out the part about the town, if it's not fire-related, if you're not doing the ice cream social or training. Or CPR or those kind of things that you do for your, your group or town people. Then the, the town council should be kept informed of that so that we have the right, it's like anything, we approve like a run, doesn't mean we endorse it. But we should still be on there that we get to improve what the fire station's used for because it is owned by the town.
Do you anticipate a use that we would have, that, that we would have to come to you for?
No, but why was it in there eleven years ago?
I have no idea, that's what we try.
Okay, well, I mean, if we're going to bring up past history, there's a reason, I've written enough contracts in my life, there's a reason it's in there.
Well, if you feel this is, if you feel this is important, you can leave it in, because it, it doesn't make any hill of beans to me.
Okay.
Well, we leave your first one, though. This language that you want to put back in says that you're going to continue making the quarterly payments. And you say you're going to take formal action on the budget request, that, the, the reason. This language is problematic, Mary Lou, is if we're going to have this amount with an acceleration clause, then we're, you're not going to have, you're not going to take action on the budget request. That's why we prefer to provide accounting information as how we spent the money, but the whole idea with having a fixed amount. And having an acceleration clause is that you, the town council doesn't have to belabor themselves with pouring through a, a budget every year and, and changing the dollar amount. That the contract is for, so.
Well, then I suggest put in the language that, do you submit what you're spending?
Yeah, I, I told you earlier, we're more than happy to do it.
Okay, then we can do that.
Yeah, so this language kind of runs in the false, you know, it's, it's opposite over a hundred eighty degrees from having a fixed contract with an acceleration, that's all. That's why we pulled it out. So we're okay with pulling that out as long as we, we put a clause in there that says we're going to provide the accounting of the funds.
Right.
Okay. I'm happy with that. What about your last one there, Mayor?
I'm looking for it, um, oh, and you, you brought it up, but I didn't like the part where you took out that, um. If you needed something done with the equipment, that it went to the fire commission and it went to the council for approval. if you needed something done with the equipment, that it went to the fire commission and it went to the council for approval. And I think it can be left in there. As you said in the past, if you have an emergency, Bill's not one to deny it, and we're not going to deny it. But I do think if it's something that we can plan for, it should be brought up to the council ahead of time.
Well, that, that's the problem with this language. We have very often, particularly with this older equipment, we have something that we find out about the day it happens, and we've got to call that. There's very few people that work on these vehicles. You can't take them down to Joe's Garage. So we have to call fire service or Hoosier Fire or one of these guys that works on fire trucks, and you have to schedule a service call immediately. Otherwise, we've got a truck down. We've only got two, we've only got two, two fire trucks. So if we have one down, it's fifty percent of our capacity is out the window. We fought the Tinker's Dam fire without a truck. So I can tell you, that's not a fun place to be.
Well, first of all, if we're working on history, I don't think the town has a history of denying you having it fixed. But I still like the clause in there that they have the right to approve it if it's something that you can pre-plan.
Well, that's the problem. When this is saying cost of necessary maintenance, repair and service agreements shall be provided to the commission, which only meets once a month, by the way. It would review the same and forward the request to the town council, which meets three weeks later. We just don't, we can't afford that language, Mary. We have to be able to do these things when we need them. This language doesn't work because these things.
Well, if it's worked for eleven years, John, I think you still, the town still owns everything, and I think you want to get their oversight into it so they can see what's going on. They haven't denied you. You're not limping along.
It didn't work very well for Tinker's Dam.
Okay, that was probably, what, sixteen years ago?
But that was exactly this scenario, right?
I just don't see why it's necessary. If we're, if we're within our budgets, like what Mike suggested, we look at what Bill has spent the last couple of years on the items that are outside the thirty, the thirty inch that we're requesting, and we see what that trend line is, and then you can plan for it. I think it's reasonable to say, just like the rest of the town, I don't, I don't see why we need to be different from the street department or the cops. If there's something that needs to be fixed, we get it fixed. We don't have to come to the police commission, and then the next month we come to the town board to buy wheels for the squad car that fell off on the highway last night. I just don't see why we need to have that sort of a process in place. It'd be different if you felt like we were misspending the money or something, but I.
I don't, I, I don't ever want to leave here and say that. But it's not the police. We don't negotiate a contract, contract with every few years, nor the, nor the street, nor the water. You're, you're an outside service, and you have to realize that.
That they're supplying, they're, they're supplying emergency service. I mean, they have to be able to perform their job, don't they?
Well, they do.
To have them down for a month while they wait for approval just doesn't seem like it's a very wise decision.
Well, Bob, I don't ever remember them, when he said Tinker's Dam fire, I'm going to look into that because I don't remember them being down for a month. And I probably was on the council then. And if somebody needed something, I think it would probably have been Bob Angelo, they would have gotten it fixed, and we would have approved it after the fact. But I don't think you want to give up some of our rights to approve things that we own.
But, but how does, how does approving it after the fact work? I mean, what, what's?
Well, usually it would be like send out an email like the chief does, even though he's a town employee. Heads up, this is the issue I have. I just want to run this by you guys. I don't think we have a history of denying people things.
I don't think you understand the reality I'm talking about, Mary Lou. At three in the morning, if the pump blows the top off of it, which has happened, we've had fittings blow right off the top of the pump. If that happens at three in the morning, we make a phone call to fire service, and they're, they're there within twelve to twenty-four hours, and they put it back together for us. If we had to wait to get that approval, they may get us out of sequence on their service call list, or anything could happen.
John, you don't know what I understand, but just let me, so that you can understand me, is if this happened in the last eleven years, how did you deal with it if the council was supposed to approve it?
We didn't get approvals, Mary.
Okay, so you were doing it.
Doing what?
Fixing the, the thing that blew up.
Right. That's why we want to change the language so that it matches reality instead of leaving language in there that's untenable.
So you don't want the council to have any say-so over it, even though we'll, we should have some oversight on it to see if it's. I'm not saying don't get it done. I'm just saying you can bring it to the council and say, we had to do this. It blew up at midnight, and we fixed it.
That's what I'm proposing, that we do it that way. That's what I'm proposing, that we do it. The way this language reads, we have to bring it to you before we do it. I'm telling you, that's untenable.
Okay.
If you want to change the language and come up with something that's more of a compromise, you know, we can present. Look, we come to Bill whenever those things come due. Bill, how often do you get something from fire service on the trucks? You're muted, Bill.
Yeah, very, very little. And I, I wanted to comment that, you know, we, we fixed an HVAC, and I've been here over nine years. And that was the first time that we ever had a HVAC fix. And so, you know, we're not going to have people sitting there in the freezing weather with no, with no heat. And I don't, I actually remember doing a garage door, but that, that was the requirement, too. So that's always going to be something that we're going to be able to handle with, without that. So I, I, I would support John in that regard, that we're not, you know, that we, we need to, we need to get away from, from that. But, but the council does get to view that at the end, and, and, and the council can say, you know, when you fixed that HVAC, did you, you know, next time, call the X Y Z firm or something else, and we can, we can, we can have a mild chastising of, but in the end, we, you know, we get it done, and that's just the way it's always been. So I, you know, I, I don't think, I think we can get in, we can get too low into this detail and say, yes, the council does need to. But I do feel that if we have emergencies, we've always been able to take care, whether it's police, street, or, or, you know, or, or even the, even the water lapping at our doors, you know, so we're going to get it done.
Mary, if you want some sort of a threshold dollar amount, if it's pre-planned, we'd be more than happy to. I try to do that with Bill. If, if there's something coming up that's optional or not optional, but if it's not time-sensitive, we'd be more than happy to present it to you. But I just, this language says that we're going to present everything to you, and it's just not tenable. If you want to say that anything over ten thousand dollars or pick a, pick a number that, that's, that's not an emergency basis or isn't, it doesn't have to be done, that we come to the council, that there's not a problem at all with something like that.
Okay, let me take a look at it.
Good suggestion.
I'd like, yeah, the one thing I'd like to comment on is that while I don't have a problem with the, you know, with the, with the increases that, that John is talking about, the, the only thing I need to comment on is we cannot use the comparison of the, of the increases that we charge to the, to Michiana Shores and Doonland Beach for, for police protection. Because those increases are typically required because our insurance has gone up, which the town is paying for in the, in the case of the, in case of the fire department. Our equipment costs have gone up, which the town is again paying for. So I think we, we need to, we need to separate that, you know, from, from the, you know, from the calculation because, because the three percent that we do for, for salaries, the three percent we do for the, the increases are not quite able to be compared because the town is, is, is getting those increases. So, so providing the increases to the, the fire station, when the town is eating the cost of insurance and the cost of equipment, we, we need to calculate that when we, when we go through this, this long process.
Would those increases be tied to the previous year's expenses?
Yeah, but the point being, the reason that, you know, but they're not paying, the, the fire department is not paying the insurance increase. And the fire department, the town is paying those. So I mean, if we have any, you know, I mean, we're not going to say that if our insurance goes up three percent, then you have to take a three percent reduction.
Right. I understand that, but, but we're asking them to give us a list on a yearly basis of their expenses. So why don't we base that increase on what their expenses have gone up? Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm just saying that using a flat three percent is not, you know, we, we have to do it as, and I think everybody has been, has been discussing that, that we gotta, we gotta have numbers, not percentages.
Well, keep in mind, the idea behind a, a fixed contract, Bob, I really don't want to negotiate this contract amount every year. You know.
No, I agree.
We're volunteers. I, I don't want to go through this every year. That was the whole idea, and neither did the town council back when we negotiated this ten years ago.
Right. It'd be a simple calculation to figure out what that increase is every year. New contract wouldn't have to be signed, right? I don't know. We can talk about it when we have our other meeting, but it's just another option.
I don't, I don't, I really don't want to negotiate a new number every year. I, I, I mean, if we come up with something that you guys could live with on a percentage increase acceleration clause, and we go to the thirty-eight thousand, I think everybody would be happy. You know, we can assuage Mike and John with whatever information Bill can share about the other costs involved in supporting the fire department, so you can have an idea about exactly what it overall costs are for the town, but I really don't want to do this every year.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't anticipate it being a negotiation. I would expect it would be in a calculation that our accountant could make. But, but anyway, we can talk about it at the next meeting.
Mary, that pretty much runs what you gave me on the written. I don't know if anybody else has some other things they want to talk about.
Let me talk about the one-year cancellation, and I'm, I'm speaking now on behalf of both the fire department as well as the town, because it's, it's for both parties. How does everybody else feel about one year? I, I think prior notice is important. Don't get me wrong. One year just seems a little long to me.
I'd suggest ninety days.
Well, I, I guess.
You're getting timeout now. Wait a minute, guys. So, so you have ninety-day, ninety-day cancellation clause on the fire service?
What, what, what are we going to do if the fire department says that they no longer want to be associated with us? Because Michigan City has no interest in providing fire service for us. We can't go to Michiana. I, I don't see what our choices would be. Anybody else have any ideas on what we would do?
Bob, have we visited those other options or no?
We talked to Michigan City, and yeah, they had no interest.
When was that?
Oh, my goodness. Probably three years ago.
Okay. And why, why, what about Michiana? No interest?
I don't think they have the capable, the, the capacity to take care of us.
Okay.
I don't know. They, they took Doonland up. They, I, we could talk to them, but I can't imagine how that would possibly work.
I mean, I'm just asking. I'm not saying that, but I mean, there are, you, you do need to look at what else is available.
Right. And I guess that's my point, is I don't think there's much else available. I mean, I, I think, you know, we're kind of losing sight of the fact that these people are volunteers. They, they devote a significant portion of their life. They put their lives at risk.
Right.
Um, I, I, I'm not crazy with the way the conversation's going. I, I do get this sense that somehow they're being viewed as the enemy, and I think these folks have done an incredible service for the town, something that I certainly wouldn't be capable of doing. And I, I think we need to keep that in mind when we, when we're involved in these negotiations.
I do, too, and I want to tell you, I don't consider them the enemy at all, period.
Yeah, I'd like to go on record as, as actually making a comment that I've never said that the entire meeting.
No, and I'm not saying any, yeah, no, I agree. And nobody has said that tonight, although I have to admit at previous town council meetings, before we were on Zoom, there certainly was that sense from some people.
But not this group.
No.
Not this group, and I think you find that we support them. I respect them. Yeah, they're the first ones on the scene.
Right. And I guess, you know, as far as capital equipment, you know, I'm very grateful for all the work they've done, and we, to, for us to expect them to go out on these calls in equipment that might fall apart on them or might not be able to do the job or might put themselves at risk, I think we need to keep that in mind.
Right.
That's why we got to get a plan for the capital equipment.
Exactly.
That's my biggest concern. The rest of this stuff can all be worked out.
To, to Mike Johnstone's point, though, before your next meeting, I'll try to get you the statutes, because what I'm not clear on is whether there's any statutory restrictions on what the, what can or can't be. So I'll, I'll look into that, and I'll also, you know, give some guidance if there's some other standards that, that may be applicable to help you guys have a benchmark for what, what appropriate times, what are other departments similarly situated? I mean, Long Beach is unique in many ways, but at least that'll give you the, some, a basis of information, and, and you might have some statutory restrictions in there, but I'll, I'll give you that information so you guys can make an informed decision.
Thanks, Chris.
I, I heard two comments in the last five or ten minutes that I'd like to just revisit. So Mary Lou, you're suggesting go out in the marketplace and find something cheaper or better, and Mike, you're suggesting that we don't want to have.
Did you hear me say that?
I don't know. I, I.
Bob Lemay brought up two.
Mary, I'm pretty good with the English language, and what you said was, have we explored other avenues besides our fire department?
Bob Lemay brought up Michigan City and Michiana, and I asked, have we explored them?
That's exactly what I'm saying you said. All right, let's leave that alone. Mike, what's the deal on the, you, you don't like the fact that this thing needs a year to get negotiated out if we have, if either party has a problem? Why is that a problem?
I, based on contracts that I've, I've signed and I've been involved in, I've never seen a clause that required a one-year notification. That's all I'm coming, that's where I'm coming from. And I was saying it, by the way, you might have missed this, John. I was saying that on behalf of the fire department as well as the town, not just the town. And so both parties have to be considered in this. So I, I just ask the question, does that make sense for everybody that's on, that's in this meeting tonight? Does, does a year make sense? And I've not signed a contract ever where I've done business with someone else, another company or whatever, that required a one-year notification.
Well, I don't know how many fire contracts you've negotiated, but I don't see how we can get any shorter timeframe than that.
I think it's fairly likely I've never signed one, John.
So what's the, what's, I'd like to get some of these things outdone tonight so we don't have to keep revisiting them.
Well, it sounds to me like, it sounds to me like, I think ninety days is too short. That was John's suggestion.
Six months, six months. That's plenty of time, isn't it?
Why are we shortening it? What's the point?
I think I made my point. I'm, I'm not going to restate myself.
No, I got your, I got your viewpoint, Mike. I'm asking the other individuals, what's, why are we trying to shorten that timeframe? What does that do for us?
I'm, I'm comfortable with a year. That's what the old contract said, right? Historically, if a year was good, I don't see a reason to change it.
I mean, what we've done in the past is it's been a, a kind of a perpetuity sort of a contract with this dump clause or whatever you want to call it, cancellation clause with this year timeframe. I don't think that from the fire department standpoint, we've never anticipated that we wanted to stop doing what we've done for ninety years. So I would assume the town has the same commitment to us unless they find something that's a problem. If they find something that's a problem, then they give us notice, and they're going to disband us in a year. I, I don't see why that's a problem. I really don't.
I read that a little differently, John. It looks to me like it's a year if it's a termination of the agreement without cause, but there's a provision there for a faster termination if it's for cause.
I agree. So why do we need to change this language? I keep asking the same question over and over again.
It's a good, it's a good clarification, Bernie. With cause is less than a year.
Yep.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Okay. So we're going to leave that in at a year?
So what would cause be?
They stop showing up.
Okay, all right.
We, 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 we stop paying the rent or what?
Yeah, the town stops paying. I mean, those are cause.
Okay.
Can I ask a question that nobody's addressed? We've talked a lot about the fire department. Can I ask a question that nobody's addressed? We've talked a lot about the fire department. But there's a provision in here for first responder medical protection. And I would like to hear a little bit, maybe from John, maybe from Megan, what that first responder medical protection is.
We, we are, we have a whole group, well, Meg can speak to it, but in terms of, we are what's designated by the LaPorte County Emergency Medical Service as a first responding agency, which means we have fully trained people to respond to medical emergencies, Ernie. We, we go to any call, anything from a lift assist to get somebody up off the floor to heart attacks and, and, you know, very serious accident calls. So that's, we are certified and we have people that do that and we go to all those calls. So that's what that medical first response sort of a language is all about. Does that, does that get where you want to be?
That helps, but it, it doesn't tell me, is it all in the home or is this something where we transport them in an ambulance if they need to get to a hospital?
The, the LaPorte County Emergency Medical Service provides the ambulance service. We are what's called first responders, which means we go in our personal vehicles or fire equipment to the call. And then we administer first, basically it's first aid, Ernie, for the most part. But it's, it's significant first aid. We have, you know, equipment, bag masks and ventilation equipment and oxygen and equipment and all different things we use to resuscitate people. We have equipment for rescues down on the beach, including ropes and things and, and all kinds of different equipment for different rescue and medical situations.
Do we, do, do we have defibrillators?
Yes, we do.
And, and just as an aside, I know there are residents in Dunland Beach who have not been very happy about the fact that anytime they call 911, the ambulance has to come. And so even if they don't need to go to the hospital, they get charged for an ambulance visit. So our people have been able to avoid that sort of situation, for instance, in a lift assist.
Well, I'm not being critical. I think that it's against, they have first responder medical protection. I just want to agree with what we put up.
Ernie, I think the one thing is like, we don't transport them, but in the event of a full arrest, because there's only two medics on the rig, they would have one of us ride along with them. That would be the only time where we would assist in transporting somebody to the hospital to continue CPR. But like John said, we, to be an emergency medical responder, so this is a step above CPR, but a step below EMT, we had to go through a LaPorte County exam, training, and then a state, Indiana state examine past that. So there's designated first, medical first responders or the, I guess, correct term is emergency medical responders or EMRs. So there's a difference. As firefighters, we're all CPR certified. There's just some of us that have a step up in the medical training side of it to respond to those calls. Does that help answer it too?
It does help. But then let me ask a follow-up question. Has anybody thought about or looked at what it would cost to get us to the next higher level where maybe we have an EMT or maybe we haven't?
So you're not allowed, because I actually, I love the medical side so much. I actually inquired to the LaPorte County Training Director about becoming an EMT to act as an EMT on scene. And you are not allowed to as a member of the Long Beach Volunteer Fire Department, you have to act for LaPorte County as an employee of the LaPorte County. So I would have to work for the LaPorte County EMS in order to act as an EMT on scene. So, and you cannot transport. So you have to be a government agency by, by LaPorte County. So we'd have to be an EMS LaPorte County transport rig, whatever you want to call it.
And is EMT synonymous with paramedic?
Nope. Paramedic, EMT, EMR, CPR. So paramedic, most advanced training, EMT, advanced, EMR, basic advanced, CPR, basic CPR.
Thank you. Just to give you an example of the level of service that we provide as opposed to something like Michigan City Fire. I was at Notre Dame Church a few weeks back and somebody collapsed in the church. 911 call was put out. That's not our first responder area. It's actually Michigan City. And Michigan City's fire rig came and sat on Moore Road and waited till the ambulance showed up. So, you know, the, the level of service that the town of Long Beach enjoys with the first responders on our department is bar none. And, and I think, you know, that's just anecdotal, I know, but I just want you to appreciate that. If you decided to go somewhere else, Mary Lou, you might find that the level of service isn't what you're experiencing today.
Maybe at one of the meetings, it would be helpful to hear how many of our calls are the first responder medical calls versus fire calls.
That's reported every month at the town board meetings, Ernie. We do a report of that very information every month at the town board.
Do you have a feel for what the numbers look like?
We, we're very heavily medical versus fire. There might be, there might be 20, 20 to 30 medicals in a given summer month against maybe three or four fire calls.
Yeah, we have more medical as we have a more aging community, but also, you know, if we get called to pick somebody up, you know, five or six times in a two-week period, those all come as medical calls. The ambulance doesn't come because they, they don't want to be transported. They're going to deny transport. So we help lift them up. But that is considered to be a medical call. I would say we get a lot more, we're starting to get a lot more medical calls as you see more people moving here and an aging community.
Thank you. So I think we've pretty much hit on all Mary Lou's points. I think we've kind of gotten through Mike's points. Is there anything else specific somebody wants to bring up that we can hammer out tonight? Or are we just going to meet on the 11th of March?
I'm good.
Good deal. I'll get those meetings scheduled. I'll put them on the website. Everybody put them on their calendar and we'll see you then. All right.
Let's all try to, let's all try to get our homework done so we're not just rehashing the same things. Let's, Mike, if you get a chance, get with Bill and figure out what you need to know about. If there's something you need from me, let me know.
And whatever, whatever you learned, share with the rest of us.
Will do.
Yeah, bring us all up to speed.
And we'll try to do some projections on, some tighter projections on those capital equipment. But I might suggest, you know, I'm going to take off my fire department cap now and talk to you guys as a town board members. We need to do the same thing with the other departments because we need to have a plan. Number one, it's required by the audit information that we're all aware of. But it's also something we need to do. You know, we need to plan for the street department's needs as well, just like we do for the rest of the departments.
Agreed.
Good deal. All right. Well, since this isn't a real meeting, I don't think we need a motion. So I'm just going to say goodnight, everybody.
Goodnight. Thanks.
Bye.
Bye.
Night, thank you.